All right. Hello, everyone. We are live. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined today by founder Greg Killen.
Hello.
As well as Julie and Colin from our team. How's it going, guys?
Hey, everybody.
I hear Macy. Hi, Macy.
She's singing the Paw Patrol theme song back there, so.
In case you guys didn't know, it's Paw Patrol time when we do work session and Colin is here with us, so.
All day, it's Paw Patrol.
All day. Okay. Well, just in case you guys ever are in the inbox, maybe Colin needs some Paw Patrol memes when you're chatting with him. Anyway, we're so happy to have you guys here today. Welcome. Today is our training that we have had requested many times. To be perfectly frank, I've avoided this like for a couple of years now, A, because it's not my primary area of expertise, and B, because we can get down a rabbit hole, and I mean like a slide down a steep rabbit hole real fast with something like this. So I really endeavored today to make this something that is easy to understand with very simple steps that you can follow today to actually implement these things in your good oiling system. So I just want to give a quick caveat because I know that you could be watching us here live today. And A, you're like, what is she talking about? And that's okay. You didn't get the email. If you don't know Get Oil, we are the one stop shop where everything that you need but the VO to run your young living business. And if you have an oily business or sorry, rather a business that can get oiled or something that's nice and adjacent to your young living business, you can run that with us too. And on these live sessions, every Thursday, we talk about how you can get that done, as well as little things about, you know, tips and tricks about how to grow your own living business. We bring on leaders and content creators and experts from the field to come here and share their knowledge with you. So we're honored to have you here with us today. If you came here with questions, whether it's about today's topic or anything else, feel free to go ahead and put those into the Q and A regardless again, whether they're on this topic today or not. And we're really excited to have you here. So team, let's go ahead and pop videos off so we can get some good slide recording quality. And I'm going to go through some slides with you guys to teach SEO. So let me actually, before I do, let me grab my chat here and my Q and A box. Thank you, Zoom. Hopefully I'll still be able to see things while I have this thing whole, maybe hopefully. Okay. All right. So today we are talking about basics of search engine optimization. So we're going to talk about how we can get ourselves set up to get found online on our Get Oil link website. So if you are blogging, you're creating custom pages, you want people to find you, you want people to find your website, not just because you're out there sharing it on social or sending the email link to people or in the DMs or wherever you want to get found. SEO is all about getting found. So what we're going to do today first is we're going to have some training. Then we're going to do member website review and then Q and A and support. And Sam, you just asked a question. I see, by the way, I am seeing this in the chat right now, but I can't promise I'll see all of the chat. So just please make sure if you have questions to put it in the Q and A, but the SEO will work with templates. And I'm going to be showing you how you'll be able to get that done today. Actually, I'll show you a screen share of how you can do that. All right. So if you've got questions, like I mentioned, or you need help, add it to the Q and A. And if you watch this in the future and you'd like to be like Sam and ask me questions live here on our call, you can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession to get reminders and get the first replays and all the resources and stuff that we share as soon as they come out. And if you want to work together, one on one, on a live call, as someone will be today, one lucky person, maybe more if we have time, you can go to get oiling.com/website review. Note that even though it says website review in the title, this is not just about the website. If you want help with your strategy, if you're unclear on what goes where, this is an open call. If you would like to have some help one on one on one of these live calls at noon on Thursday, you can sign up for one of those slots on this link. All right. Now I want to ask you guys a question. For those of us who are here today, did you have a website before you got started with Good Oil? And tell me about that. Where did you have it hosted? Did you have a WordPress site? Were you on like another Young Living platform? Did you even have a website? Oh, wow. A lot of us actually just started with Good Oil. Okay, I see a WordPress here. WordPress. All right. Okay, perfect. So we're kind of all over the board here. There's definitely some WordPress. So those of you who had WordPress, some of this is going to be somewhat familiar to you, right? WordPress, Squarespace, Weebly, right? So all of these website platforms, once you have Get Oil, you don't need those anymore, right? You can have everything to serve your business all under one roof with us, right? So just in case you didn't know, our members save hundreds of dollars a month often when they're switching from services like WordPress, Squarespace, Kajabi, and a lot of these other platforms that do some of the things we do, and they're definitely not built for Young Living. And the reason why they're able to do that is because we have everything that a digital brand needs to get found, convert leads, serve clients, and scale. So building a digital brand, guys, with search authority used to be incredibly complicated and expensive. I don't know for any of you guys who have been around the digital space, maybe working on SEO or trying to create websites going back a number of years, if you ever tried to like put things together that does, that like that would do what Good Oil does. If anybody has tried anything like that, if you, I don't want to drop names, but there's definitely some services out there that are notoriously confusing and very expensive that, you know, while yes, and I've certainly used them and executed, you know, major brand strategies with them. They're very expensive to maintain and they're very difficult to maintain as well. And it requires the use of seven or eight different services. With Good Oil, you all, you have all of that in one place, which is pretty cool. So whether you're looking to stand out and attract interest to leads as a brand partner or you're growing a business that thrives alongside your Young Living brand partnership, everything that you need, that you would have paid thousands of dollars for, you've got in one place with us. And we're so glad to have you here. And by the way, pat on the back here, we're actually duplicable for Young Living because once you figure out something that works for you, you can share it, literally share it with your downline to use themselves. Pretty cool. So we'll get in today's training. First, we're going to talk about what SEO is and why it's important. Then we'll get into some basic concepts of SEO as well as how to optimize your Get Oil link site. We'll get into some do's and don'ts and a couple of key mindset shifts. All right. So first, let's get into what SEO is and why it's important. First, SEO stands for search engine optimization. All right. That basically just means how to make your website show up when people search for things on the internet, right? So you have a thing to offer, somebody searches for what they're looking for, you show up on one of the first pages, that's SEO, right? So what you're able to do when you have this set up correctly is you can get organic, which is free, right? You don't pay for ads here. It's free traffic and traffic is just views, eyeballs on what you have to say and share, right? So when you have SEO set up on your site, when your site is optimized for search, people will show up at your doorstep, the right people can show up at your doorstep, your virtual doorstep, your website, who are already searching for answers that you provide there, right? It's a pretty, pretty cool thing to learn how to do, right? I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't you love to have, you know, 10, 20 new leads show up per week, per day, who are interested in what you have to say and all you had to do is invest in learning, plugging in the right words in the right places on your website and in your content, that'd be worth it, right? Pretty, pretty cool if you get it done correctly. So what you're also able to do with SEO is to become a beacon and a trusted authority. There are studies on this. People tend to trust, just intrinsically trust people and entities who show up on the first page of Google when they search for something, right? So you can become someone who is automatically trusted and seen as an authority. And what happens when there's trust? People tend to take the recommendations that you make. You happen to be recommending Young Living, right? There are people who are doing this right now, who are diamonds and crown diamonds in this company, who are using SEO for keywords and they are getting new people into their business, right? So when people search for answers to their problems, they're going to tend to trust who shows up first. And then finally, legacy lead generation versus social snacks. I don't know if you guys who are here today have heard me talk about this before. It's a little bit of a soapbox, but a lot of us rely on social media. We think that promoting and growing our business is about getting graphics and posting them on social, right? That's a fine thing to do to get engagement today, but it does absolutely nothing for your leads tomorrow or six months from now. Legacy content, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in our, in our chat here today. Legacy content is the thing that feeds your business long term. So it's like your vegetables. It's eating your vegetables. Social media is like junk food. It's like snacks. It gets you a nice little jump of energy, some engagement. Everybody loves snacks, but, but, but what we really need to do is eat our vegetables, right? All right. So let's talk about some basic concepts of SEO. First, keywords. Anybody know what keywords are? And please like ask questions if like, if you have any, as we're going through this, you guys. So the basic concepts here are keywords, content, meta descriptions, engagement, and links. Don't worry, I'm going to go through all of this. Take notes, big notes. All right. So what keywords are is essentially what your ideal person is searching for. How many of you went to Google within the last 24 hours and searched for something? You were curious about something and you went and you searched for something. Because most of us, right? Quick show of hands, most of us have done this within the last 24 to 48 hours. We are curious about something or we want to find an answer to something and we go and we search on Google, right? So keywords are those things. It's what your person is searching for. So when you think about keywords for your business, oh, I hear you. Don't go no more Google, do you? Yes, this works the same way. So your ideal person is searching for something. We want to think about what they're literally typing into the search engine. What are they actually literally typing in? So when you went to look for the thing that you were looking for the other day, what did you type in? Think about that. We want to get into the mind of our person. So when we use the keywords, those words that they put into the search engine, when we use those correctly on our site, those keywords help those people to see that you're providing something relevant for them. And even more importantly, it lets Google or the search engines, little robots, see that you are a relevant provider of content and answers. You are someone worth showing to the people who show up to search on their website. All right. So there are keyword research tools and they're all perfectly good. There are paid ones, there are free ones. There's all kinds of options. There's no wrong answer here, but you can use a keyword research tool and Google it, search it, search for keyword research tool, and you will see a number of different, a number of different options there. So use a keyword research tool to explore keywords to use on your site and in your content. Again, keeping in mind, who is your person? What are they looking for? What are the problems they have? What are they searching for help for? All right. So here's an example. I literally went to Google and I typed in keyword research tool. And you can see there's an ad up at the very top, right? And then beneath that ad, you can see that there are several listings. So Google, of course, because, well, they kind of own search. They are monopoly of search and that kind of data. I don't know if monopoly might be a problematic word to use, but I think we could all agree with that, right? There isn't a real competitor to Google where this is concerned. So, so you can see when you type in keyword research tool, these, these listings come up on Google. If you have optimized your content and your website appropriately, you will have your listings up top like this eventually. And of course, there's a lot more that we could get into here that we're totally not going to, that has to do with competition for keywords and, you know, and different ways to outrank your competition. This is a whole discipline unto itself. I don't want to get too into the weeds here. However, we do want to show up. And there are some ways that you can boost this, by the way. Video, if you see the little video tab right there. For a lot of the things that most of us here today would be creating content and wanting to rank for with keywords, videos are a really great cheat code to move your way up on the search results. Anyway, so this is what keywords look like, right? So you go to keyword research tool in Google, you search, and one of the very first non-paid listings that you'll see here is from this company, Ahrefs, that's down here at the bottom. Well, when I click that, you can actually see my keywords, keyword research tool. There is keyword research tool all over that website, right? Do you see the, the title? Not just on the Google listing, but on the actual published page itself, right? It's in the headline, it's on the page. This is important. All right. Now that's keywords. Content is another important component here that we need to take into consideration, all right? So someone that you want to be serving is out there looking for answers to their problems, right? They want to solve their problems. So they search Google, they find your content, your content solves their problem, trust is built. And then that person, of course, could then become your customer, right? So they go to Google, they search. So pretend instead of searching for keyword research tool, they're searching for, maybe they're searching for, I don't know, a holistic approach to, I don't know, they want to detox their, their liver or something. I don't know. Come up with something compliant. I'm not an expert in Young Living compliance, but come up with something like that. They search for that. You have an opportunity to show up here on Google, right? Karen, they'll all tell you that they are the best tools to use. So I would go with any of them. If somebody here has a recommendation, feel free to go for it. Google has their own that you could certainly use as well. All right. So anyway, your content is how you help them. So keywords are how they, how they find you, right? Content is how you actually deliver on what the help is that they need, right? So they're looking for answers. You have solutions. They find you when they search. They want to know what else you do, right? So the content is the information that you share with the person who has searched and then found you, right? So this is your blog posts, your web pages. This could also be YouTube, like I mentioned, podcasts. These are, this is legacy content, all of this that we are looking at right here. Blog posts, website pages, YouTube podcasts. This is legacy content. The kind of stuff we want to focus on creating because this is the stuff that ranks on search engines, all right? Then in terms of content, importantly, it needs to be readable, relevant and fresh, meaning readable. Have you ever gone to a website or maybe opened an email and it just looks like a novel, like a page block full of text? Have you guys ever seen anything like that? Did you feel motivated to read it when you did? Very likely not. And there's science behind this. We, it looks like work. It feels like work. Our brain says no in most, most of the time. And if we take the exact same content that could be inside of a dense text block and we break it up into something that's formatted, then you can actually flow, your eye flows down the page more easily. People stay on the page longer, which is important. And then, of course, the content needs to be relevant to what they're looking for and fresh, like recent. So you don't, you're not going to have something show up in the search results if it is, you know, seven years old and about topics that are no longer relevant, right? Or the links are broken or what have you. All right. Here's another basic for, for SEO. This is called meta descriptions. Now I'm going to show you what this is and also promise you that this is not very complicated. Okay? This is not something that actually directly impacts your SEO ranking, meaning and in what order you show up in the search results. But it does impact whether or not people click if you do show up in the search results. Okay? So what a meta description is, is something that is, you know, just a little description beneath the title of your content. So you're going to use this on all of your published pages and blog posts. All right. It's going to help people decide whether or not you are the search result that they want to click on. So when you write your meta description, be clear on what they're going to find there and make them a little bit curious. So what a meta description is, if you see in blue here or in purple, the whatever is right beneath it. So looking over here, right at Ahrefs, 10 keyword research tools that aren't Google. Right underneath it, it has date, and then it says, see a list of the best free keyword research tools right here, 100% free, no freemium tools or trials. That's a meta description. Under Googles, it says, our keyword research tool gives you insight into how often certain words are searched and how those searches have changed over time. That is a meta description. All right. You have the opportunity on your good oiling website to use these meta descriptions so that when your results, these, your own blog post title, the pages on your website might show up in search like this when somebody searches for something on Google or somewhere else. They'll not only see the name, the title of that page, they'll also learn a little bit about why they should click that link. All right. Now engagement, this is important because in order for the little robots that determine who gets ranked what inside of these search engines, to, in order for them to see that you are someone who deserves to be ranked highly, they need to see that people are spending time on your website, right? So they know how long someone stays on your site once they've clicked. So your goal is to keep them there. If people click and then they go immediately back to the search results, those little bots know that you weren't delivering what that person was looking for. They're not going to want to show you to the next person. Does that make sense? So we want to give people a reason to stay on our website once they click a link. And we do that by providing high value, easy to explore and easy to digest information. Very importantly, if we want engagement, and this is, I'm talking about engagement on your pages, right? Engagement on your website. This is not the same as engagement on social where people are liking, commenting, posting. I'm literally talking about people staying on the page long enough to read what's there and maybe even click links on the page to go to other pages you have, right? That's engagement. If your site is about them and what's interesting to them, what they want, you're making it about them, they're going to stick around, right? If we make it easy for them to read, right? It doesn't feel like work. They're going to stick around. And then you just want to make sure for your navigation and the bots notice this as well. Make sure you don't have broken links because if somebody clicks and it goes nowhere, they're bound to go back to where they came from, right? And we don't want to do that. All right. So getting finally here to links in basics. Links are important to SEO for a number of reasons. Authority is the technical term. Your website or the pages on your site, your content has authority for a number of different reasons. Links are one of them. Now, links to your site from other places are an indicator of popularity, right? Like if a lot of people are talking about posts on your blog and they're sharing that on LinkedIn and other social or they're, you know, they're putting links to your content on their own website, Google or the search engines are going to see that that makes you popular and popular is relevant and relevant is what people are looking for when they search, right? But the goal here is to be a well cited writer, right? Or a well cited YouTuber, if you're making video or a well cited podcaster, those things are getting shared, right? So we want to have lots of links that go back to your site. So what I want you to do is use content on sites like YouTube or Pinterest or LinkedIn to point to the content that you've created on your website. Again, one of the greatest things you can do is if you create a blog post, make a YouTube video that goes with it, embed the YouTube video on your blog post so that people stick around on your site longer to watch the YouTube video. But if somebody finds it on YouTube, have a link to your blog post in the YouTube description so that they can make their way over to your blog post to find out what else you're offering there, right? So that's a, it's a great cheat code to really up level your content and get found more easily than just relying on blogging and Google alone. Pinterest is another fantastic place to link your stuff because Pinterest kind of has its own algorithms. And, you know, we've talked about this recently. We have, we actually have a member of our community has created a Pinterest course. And another member of our community followed what she taught and she gets multiple leads a day off of an offer on her good oiling website. She's got a link to her good oiling website on a pin on Pinterest, right? It's pretty, pretty cool. So that's kind of another story, but link these things together, you guys. Because what the search engines are going, engines are going to see is that other people are talking about what you're doing. Other sites are pointing to what you're doing and that makes you relevant. Then another easy thing you can do is put your content in your link and bio on social. So this could be linking to your website itself, or if you're using a link and bio like the page, the template that we have for you. So you don't have to use Linktree, you can just use Get Oil for this. Is your link and bio could have links to your blog or a freebie that you're offering on a landing page, things like that, right? And then we want to write or produce content for other sites so that they can link to you, right? This is, this is a really powerful thing that you can do to get more leads. If you know who you're serving, find other people who are also serving them. They're not your direct competition at the end of the day. Find ways that you can work together, invite them to come and do a guest post on your website. You do the same for them. Get interviewed on their YouTube channel, their podcast. You do the same for them. And that gives you that exposure, but then importantly, every time you show up on someone else's website to share your content, you've got an opportunity to put a link to your content, to your website. Here's where you can find me, right? So the more of that that's out there, better off you are. All right. So let's talk about specifically ways for, specific ways for you to optimize your Get Oil link site. All right. So I've just gone through and kind of given you all the terms and it's okay if it's still a little fuzzy. What we're going to talk about now is actually what to do, right? What are the steps you can follow? So first, we want to get clear on who you're looking for, right? Who do you want to be found by? And then what are they looking for? Now, the answer to that second question, right? What are they looking for is something that you provide. It's probably a benefit of using oils, but they're probably not Googling oils, right? What's the benefit they're looking for? And who are they? Who is this person? So then you want to go and research keywords and use any tool, doesn't matter. There are free ones. They're all going to work basically the same. There is no best. I mean, okay, so I will say this. If, if you're wanting to rank on Google, which you should, the best tool to use is probably Googles because it's theirs, right? Like they know what is happening on their platform. That's not to say that there aren't others that do very well. A lot of these that you guys are talking about in the chat have been around for a long time and work really well. Just don't, don't get too hung up on that. So do some just light keyword research to get some ideas as to what words you can be using. And then in your content on your website, start speaking to that person and give them what they're looking for and use those keywords in your content, right? Use those keywords on your pages and your blog posts. Format those pages and blog posts so that they read nicely, so that it's not a labor to look at it and try to read what's there, right? Because our goal is to keep them on the site as long as possible and ideally have them opt in and become a lead, right? Then utilize those keywords, right, on your blog posts and in your meta descriptions, in your titles on your pages, and then make sure your site is easily navigable with no broken links. And then finally, link back to your site and its content from anywhere else you're showing up on the web. Start with what you have. If you don't have it, don't worry. Don't go create a LinkedIn account today. If you don't already have and use one to link back to your website. If you've got, you know, whatever your social media that you have is, just use that, right? Start with what you have, stick to that one thing at a time. All right. So let's talk about some do's and don'ts. And then I've got an actual checklist for you. All right. So here's one thing that you can do. First, give people a reason to click when you're sharing. And this isn't just when you're sharing on, so on, on the search engines, right? This isn't just search results. This is also when you are sharing on social media, you want to have a little bit more there, right? Because if you put a link, if you guys ever noticed, you put a link on social, like you're going to comment, you put a link in there, it'll populate usually like an image and some text down here where it says custom sharing description or on your custom pages where it says custom sharing description, that's where you have the opportunity to customize what goes there, right? So this is, I just saw a question come through about full screen. Can you guys not see my, my full screen here, like this whole thing?
Yeah, I think it's just maybe the image is kind of tiny.
Oh, got you. Okay. Well, we can, we can make sure and put the, the slides to this in the recording as well. But basically what I'm showing you guys here is this is customize my site under website and then under customized built-in theme. And Sam, this is your question from early on. If you click customize built-in theme and you scroll down, there is a custom sharing description. Right? All right. So, so there's a custom sharing description. That's what you want to put in. That's for your built-in themes. That's if you're using, you know, the body systems theme or what have you. That's where you're going to have that show up. So another in the do's and don'ts here, add meta descriptions to your custom pages, right? So that's going to be when you go to your page settings on a custom page, you are going to look down here on page and there's a sharing image. That's not something that really pertains to SEO. Sharing description does not pertain to SEO, but both of these things are good. But then over here on the far right, this is your meta description. Search engine description is meta description. This is where you're going to put those words in and tell them why they need to click this link when they find you. This is especially important to do for your homepage. So if you're somebody who is looking to be found locally, right? If you have a local business, what you can do is actually use keywords for your local market. So if you are a naturopath in Monterey, then you're going to put those two words, those keywords in your description here. You're probably also going to want to put them in the name of the page, put them on, in titles on the page, put them in the actual link name for the page as well. So for do's and don'ts as well, for formatting, guys. Guys, this is where I was talking about formatting specifically. You want to format your blog and page content with paragraph settings. So this isn't just about having some text being bigger than others and making it pretty. There's actually a thing that happens here when you click heading one and you put keywords in the title of a section of your blog post. It adds a tag. And this is a code tag that you don't see, but the search engines see it. And where you see the brackets H1, H2, H3, and so on. These are important. Your keywords need to live inside of these H1, H2 kind of of brackets. And all you have to do to make that happen, don't even worry about the code stuff, is when it's time to put a heading somewhere on your site, you click one of these headings, right? Click heading one. And that's going to make your text big. It's also invisibly going to apply one of these header tags to it, which is going to increase your SEO optimization on your site if you're using keywords in your heading. Okay, so you can also, of course, customize how these headings are showing up, whether they're all caps or you know what texts they are and so on by going to your website menu and clicking colors and fonts. Now, one thing that I wanted to really make sure that we have defined here as a don't. This is something that that we see fairly often. And while it seems like a nice and easy and pretty cheat code, it is something that can negatively impact you in your search rankings. And that is if you use a canvas image with text to show text or share a message on your page in lieu of actual text on the page. It does take a little bit more work to get something formatted, just like you like it. But if you want that message to be something that is seen and recognized by the search engine, it needs to be text, right? And it needs to, especially if we're calling out a keyword, it needs to be in this heading size. And you can do that under this little paragraph guy right here and then select one of these heading options. All right, more do's and don'ts. Format your content for easy readability by breaking up your paragraphs like you see here with spaces in between them and using headers like you see this number one treats back pain, number two aids fertility. These are drawing the eye to our main points and keywords. It's also because that's H1, that's the header. That's showing Google or whatever the search engine is that that these are keywords, right? What we don't want to do is publish large and unbroken blocks of text. So if your post or what you want to say is long, break it up with images and headers. Take note, when we send emails out to you, there's typically a fair amount of space. It's almost an enter between every sentence, right? It's like every sentence or two sentences, depending on how long the phrases. We do that on purpose, right? It's easier for your eye to make it down and actually not register this as being something that's a labor to read if we have it broken up. So be mindful of that. All right. So do add meta descriptions to your blog posts. That is under advanced options on all of your blog posts. And again, all you have to do is be straightforward. I'm actually showing you a real thing. This is the Jane site, sort of the dummy site that we use for get oiling. We've got a blog post there. This is the meta description as it shows up on Google. It's the exact same thing as you see right here. So you can choose to put what you want to put underneath these things, right? So we're kind of seeing how these things go together. That makes sense. All right. Another thing that you can do, and this is to keep your content relevant and fresh, is that you can take your old blog posts. So here's one from December of 2019. And let's republish it. Let's make today's date, the publication dates and add any kind of relevant information or updates to it as necessary. So you don't have to necessarily create entirely new content all the time. You can actually refresh old content. One of the greatest strategies I've actually seen followed is to have a best of list for the year. So best something of 2021. And then you update that for next year, right? When it's 2022 and you you refresh the stuff that's on the list. And so something like that can actually get a great deal of ranking over time, a blog post like that can or a page. It's just a really, really good thing to do. So don't keep lots of old posts with stale or irrelevant content. You need the search engines to see that you are up to date and providing great results so that the people who trust them to deliver good results to them will know that you're someone that they can get those from. You could also email your existing subscribers. So if you go through and you update those, those blog posts, shoot out an email, let them know that you've got new content. Don't assume that they're just going to know that you posted something. But do make sure that you are only sending this kind of thing to the people who have opted in to receive it. You can do that with our tags feature in your good oiling system. All right. Now finally, understand we've barely scratched the surface here on SEO. But you don't need to be an expert today or ever. I'm nowhere near expert on this, you guys. I've been doing what I do for over 10 years now. You're going to be just fine. You don't have to know it all. So small steps consistently will get you a great distance easily. Scratch the surface. I'm scratching my head. I get it, Lauren. I get it. Just watch it again, go through the slides. And more importantly, after this slide here, you're going to see some very simple things that you could do today. So what I want you to also consider, guys, is to commit to becoming great at creating content that serves the person you want to attract to your business. Right? Legacy content. And then consistently create and deliver that content, even if it's one time a month to start. And guys, the best time to make content was 90 days ago, right? It's always a good time to create content. We can always go back and edit, fix, modify, republish, optimize the things that we did 90 days ago. But we can't go back and fix the fact that we didn't start creating content 90 days ago. So start creating content, make a blog post a month. Work your way up to doing it once a week. Right? And be okay with not getting it perfect. And know that it actually works in your favor just fine to go back and reoptimize and fix up and republish the stuff that you did before. All right? This is not a game of perfection. Everybody in this business, and I mean even the people at the top of this business are constantly learning and failing forward. Even the techiest people, this stuff changes all the time, right? People's taste changes all the time. Algorithms change every six months. There's no perfect way. But what you can do is to commit to showing up and serving your people. And if you can do that, you can always create improvements that'll move you forward. All right. So here's what I want you to do next. Deep breath. This is going to be real easy. All right. I want you to go to your built in themes that's under your. We can actually, we'll show you where to go since the the image was so small. And Greg, if you could queue that up, that'd be awesome because you're the one that found that for me today. So add a meta description to your built in themes. So if you want to share your built in themes. So that that's going to be your body systems and all of that. So your built in themes on get oiling. Go to your pages, especially your homepage, if you have a custom homepage and any blog posts that you have and add meta descriptions. All this needs to say, your meta description just needs to tell them why they should click. Give them a little curiosity. If your blog post is seven reasons why blah, 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 then you're going to say you're really going to want to check out number three if you are dot, 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 right? Give them a reason to click. Don't be clickbaity, but give them a reason to click. Then go back and review those pages and posts for visual flow, for readability, for links, making sure those click correctly, go to the right places and for navigation. And then do a little, little bit with a free tool of research just to get some ideas of what some of the search terms are that are related to the ones that that come to mind for you. You're going to, all you're going to be doing with a with a search tool is looking for other phrases that your ideal person is putting into Google. That's all we're supposed to do with this. You have an idea. You think, okay, I think she's searching for this. So you put that into the search tool, like the keyword research tool. And it's going to spit out recommendations for you that are similar. And that will help you get some insights into what other content you can create, words you can be using on your page and so on. Okay? Then edit those pages and blog posts to include that some of those keywords in your titles and the URLs on your pages. And that's that very last piece, right? So if you're, you're editing your custom pages, you have like the actual name of it as it lives in your good oiling system. You have what they see. And then the last one is, you know, actually what the end of the URL is. Include keywords in those if you want that to be found. And then in the headlines, using the paragraph editor and body text. Finally, go back and update and republish those old blog posts while you're at it. And consider, consider writing a new blog post this week. All right. So I would love to know, and we're going to get into all our Q and A here in just a second. What would you like to learn next? Do you want more SEO? That's something else entirely. Let us know what kind of things you're interested in learning more about. And we will look at adding those to the queue here for upcoming more SEO. Oof, y'all trying to go off the deep end. Okay. All right. So let's get into some Q and A and website reviews. Team, we can, we can come back to to video. Lots of questions in the chat. I see. I don't want to miss any of those. So if we have not visited your question, please make sure you make it to over to the Q and A. So Karen asked, can you please define well cited? So well cited just means like you're, you're being referenced. Somebody's talking about you. You want people talking about you. So talking about you to the little robots that run the search engines just basically means that they're, they're saying things and they're linking to something on your website. That's basically it. Okay, Beth, what's a good way to get contacts to update their email or text preferences? I'm in my second month and imported my Young Living list. I'm getting some people in the vault to participate. I've also used events, but I'm currently sending everything out by email and that might not be the preference. So Greg?
Yeah, yeah. It kind of depends on like what all you're setting or sending it out, how you're sending it out. If it's campaigns have a way to, you know, allow each preference or each contact can have their own preference about email versus text. But if you're sending like a bulk email, then that will go by email. So you'd have to come up with some other way of directing that for people. So in this case, like, for example, what you could do, if you're sending out like a bulk one time email instead of a campaign or bulk one time text, you could send out a communication, whether it's by email and text perhaps to get people both ways. But then set up a landing page that really has their preference. So like click here if you want to receive emails or, you know, messages by email. Click here and fill out a different landing page if they want to receive it by text. And then it would tag them email or text in the camp, in the contact manager. And then you can filter by that tag whenever you send out your next message. So that's probably guessing based on what you said, that would be what you'd, what would be a good thing to use. If you need, you know, more info on that, we'd be happy to help by support. We could draw a diagram or write something up for you too. If that helps.
Awesome. Yeah, there's, there's a number of different ways. It really does kind of depend on on what you're sending though. Yeah. Okay, what else? Donna says, is there an option to get a one on one consult? Yes, absolutely. So that's going to depend, just shoot us a message with kind of what you have in mind and we can sort of point you in the right direction because we do have design services, VA services. Or if you're looking for more comprehensive strategy, big picture stuff, then that may be working with me. So a lot of different options here. So just reach out to our team. Allison says, on my oils for homeschoolers blog post, do I add oils and homeschoolers in variation in the meta description? So actually you can, but you don't have to. So the meta description, what's the best way to put this? So there are things that you can do with keywords that directly impact your SEO ranking, right? So that's going to be using keywords in the title of of your post. Keyword in the URL, which if you're doing your blog post, like the title is going to make the URL. So that's fine. Don't worry about that. Using keywords in those headers, right? Using the paragraph feature. Now, there are other things that impact SEO that aren't keyword specific, right? Like so if somebody clicks a link, how long do they stay on the page? Or do they actually click the link, right? Like if people are showing up, are people clicking? That is where the meta description comes in on on the search terms. The meta description is simply there to give context and let somebody know why they should click. And if a lot of people click and it's working to kind of get people clicking, then that's going to boost your ranking. But it doesn't necessarily have to contain those words. So it's not, it's not as much a keyword thing as it is a click through rate thing. Good question. Okay, so please keep them coming. Sydney, I have you here for a site review. If you're ready, raise your hand for me and we'll bring you out to chat. And again, if you guys still have questions, feel free to, feel free to keep asking.
There was a quick follow up question until, you know, before she gets out here about the clicking here. If you want text, looking here, if you want email. So in that case, what I suggest is sending out perhaps one email and one text. And in each of those, you'd have two different lengths. One would be, I want to sign up by email. One of them would be, I want to sign up by text. Sending them to a landing page is probably easier for you to set up. There is a way through automations where you can make it a one click registration. So they just have to click the link. And then it will automatically register them for email or tag them as as email or text without even having to fill out a landing page. So yeah, I'd say like, you know, write an email that says, hey, I'd like to communicate with you the way you like the best. Click here if you want email. Click here if you want text. Click both links if you want both. That sort of thing. And then you can go from there. Both of that helps.
Excellent. Hi, Sydney.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Yes. Okay.
Excited to chat with you. Tell us about what you're looking for.
So I have my get oiling site up. I tried to customize it so it's non YL if I, I guess, if you will. Just because I don't want people to automatically have that negative connotation and say, oh, that's, I don't want this. Because it's more than just oils. So it's a lot about hormonal birth control transitioning through non toxic living. So I'll talk about more than just oils, lots of self advocacy mindset tips, stuff like that. So I don't have a ton, ton on the website right now. My big things that I have are I try and keep my blog pretty up to date. Oh, I think that was a broken link. I do have some broken links and things that I haven't quite fixed. But I, I haven't done any SEO on it because I didn't know how to. So this was a really good call for me to be on. I am wanting to get some more engagements, more audience. I don't know really anything about funnels or how that works at the moment. I don't have any courses set up yet. So I'm still in the pretty beginning stages of it. I just wanted any sort of tips or things that you guys can see right off the bat that I might want to rework and optimize.
Awesome. Yeah, no, I'm so glad that you're here and you're doing a wonderful job. I love, I love your branding, the colors, real kind of unified strategy here in terms of how things are showing up visually. I would encourage you to echo that in using featured images on your blog posts. So that when people decide to go over to your blog, that there is, you know, that sort of, you know, this, this book has pictures feel.
I have my photos in the blog post itself. That one's really intense. I have other nicer pictures and other blog posts, but I don't, I don't know how to get them on the, I guess, this homepage of the blog post.
Yeah, got you. Okay. So, um, so there's, 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 I'll show you how to do that here in just a second. But I want to show you someone who's doing this really well. And she's actually going to be joining us on a, on a weekly work session next month with some canvas secrets, which is pretty exciting. So she actually, this is a quite large image that she is using, but most of hers are like this. But they're all, you know, more or less, you can see the branding is pretty congruent. It's pretty consistent. Sometimes it's got her amazing face. It's always got, you know, you know, the text, what have you. There are different images and things like that. So so creating images like that, and this is again, this is kind of separate from SEO. But just, you know, to continue the branding that you already have in place. It would be a good idea to, you know, have sort of what the title is of your post in the the featured image. So that when people are perusing, it's more attractive. But how you do that is if you go over to your blog post here and we will go to edit post, then under advanced options, we're going to, let's see, you're going to upload a featured image, actually, before you get to advanced options. So there's featured image, right? So that needs to be uploaded. But then don't show the featured image on the post. Because that's actually, it's going to insert it right at the very top and you might not want it there. But that way, at least you'll have a featured image and it'll show up in the list like Katinka's do over here. So let's see. So there's that. All right. So importantly, go, you know, getting to the SEO, you know, the optimization of your content here. First, I would be thinking about keywords, right? So if your person is searching for essential oils, they're probably looking for a specific application of essential oils, a particular essential oil or a topic around essential oils. So I would actually go a little deeper, thinking about the context of essential oils that she's really looking for. Thinking about the context of essential oils that she's really looking for. Because you know, we can't like give the whole dissertation on essential oils effectively in a single blog post. And it would serve you much, much better to break that down into an infinite number of smaller topics that are more relevant to her than the dissertation, right? Very few of us want to actually go read a dissertation on something. We want to get the quick bite of the thing that gives us what we're, what we're looking for. So I would, I would really kind of visit what her intentions are when she's going and logging into Google or wherever and searching.
Okay.
And, um, you know, so this could be, since we're talking about buzzword and fad, you could say, you know, do essential oils really work? Are, do essential oils really work for insert word thing? That's a keyword that's important for her here.
Okay.
Right? So just do essential oils really work for hormone balance or something like that? And then, and then you're talking about that in here. So then importantly, I would have actual headers. And I think I saw Allison, me have asked a question. So going, let me go over to this one that we're talking about here. All right. So what I would do is have something here in paragraph heading. Right? So put that there. So essential oils would be a keyword. The whatever this is would probably be a keyword as well, right? So this is, and actually you can actually look at your, at your code view here. Do you see where it says, it says H1?
Okay.
Things that are inside of H1 brackets. And again, you don't have to worry about coding. None of us here has to worry about.
That's what I was going to ask. Do I have to put those specific words in there?
You don't know.
Title.
All you have to do is just make sure that the paragraph is set to one of these headings.
Okay.
All you gotta worry about. You don't have to know a lick of code. You don't, don't worry about any of that. Just make sure that you've got the heading setting. And if you do, then you're golden. So I would, I would do that throughout this, right? You don't want to stuff your keywords into your headings. This is because it can make it feel spammy. But just, you know, punctuate, break things up. So I'll show you. So this Jane account on her blog, if we go over to this, which one was it? I've, I've used this for, I think, yeah, okay. So I've used this as an example many times for different things, this particular site. But, um, but you can see, you know, we've got some images here. We've got, you know, there's a little blurb of information, but now we're going into, I talked about seven. My headers, one, two, three, four, right? I'm going through all of these. Having numbers, you guys are really great thing to do for like getting people to click because they, they want to know, well, well, I, I want to know. What are they? You said there's seven, your brain's immediately like, show me what those seven are. So, um, but then we're, we're breaking it up. So it's easy for them. Cause maybe for instance, you know, they knew that you knew about yoga. But they're really just interested, like, does fertility work here? Oop, hey, there's, there's fertility. This is the information I came for right here. Right? So this is, it's not just for the keywords. Of course, keywords. This is, this is an H1. This was a header. Keywords are going to be important for Google, uh, but then it also is helping your reader to find what they're looking for. And the more we can give them what they want, uh, the more they're going to trust what we have to say. And of course, that is our goal at the end of the day. Is, is for folks to trust us enough to take our recommendations and buy what we're either selling or recommending.
Okay.
So yeah, I would, I would just kind of break it up in that way. Uh, and I would definitely, because of the length of your blog post, consider using some like headers, just to kind of space things out and give people an idea of, okay, now we're talking about this. Now we're talking about that.
Yeah, I find when I write, I am very wordy and I'm like, oh crap, I need to split this up into two or three posts and.
That's, that's a blessing. That's a blessing. A lot of us get stuck and just don't even know the first place to start. So.
And I start typing, I'm like, oh no, this is way too much, way too much.
But there's, I don't know, I'm trying to remember. I think I did this in Go for Gold for sure. But there is a message mapping exercise that I've taught before where you just basically dump your brain into an outline. And then you just try to get to the smallest topic possible inside of that tree. And then you pick that thing. And then you go and, um, and you, uh, and you write a blog post about that thing. So instead of saying, I'm going to write a blog post about essential oils, I'm going to write a blog about essential oils and hormones. But no, maybe I'm going to write a blog post about essential oils and thyroid hormones. Or no, I'm going to write, I'm going to write a post about feeling fatigued and the seven things you can do today to feel better. And essential oils is going to be one of the things I mentioned. Cause that's what she's really looking for, right? We can, you see how we kind of drilled down there?
Yeah, I'll have to find that lesson in there because I have that program.
Perfect. Yeah, that's, it's in there. And actually what I would do is look and be, uh, there's some deep dive videos. There's one of them, we were on for a very, very long time that day. But it was, um, I think that was one of the better trainings that we did on the, it was the alternative approach to message mapping. If you want to check that out.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, the, um, the hormones 101 page that I have, I made those graphics through Canva. Should I switch it and make it text-based? Cause I, that's basically a Canva image that I pasted in there when I was starting out at the very beginning.
Hmm. So what I would do with this is actually maybe offer this as a download on the page, but put, put all of this information onto the page itself. So have this is like sort of the header section of the page and then break down, you know, these just more or less block all this stuff out into page content because a lot of what's in here keyword wise is going to be really important for you. But you can say, hey, I've got a free download of this. Click here and now you can get leads.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want this in a handy infographic.
Yeah, I'll have to see how I can do that.
Pretty.
And then there was one more question that I had, and I think I might've forgotten it. I don't remember if it was got my blog or. Oh, um, this might be a completely different topic for even a different work session, but I had seen that you guys talked about a member area similar to Facebook groups that you can have within your get oiling site.
Yeah.
Is that a whole other topic for a new day?
Well, we've actually, we just did one the other day, but I can show you, uh, I'll, I'll show you Jane's. Um, actually that's right here. That's not what I want to do. Um, let's see, I think this will work. I may have to go log into the Jane site. Nope, that works perfectly. Okay. So a member area here, zoom out a little bit. So member area has vaults. These vaults are the things that would effectively replace a Facebook group in a lot of ways. If you're running challenges, if you are working with young living customers. So like this one, for instance, this would be like a young living group on a good oiling site. If this was an active group, you'd see two columns, the content over here on the left and a chat, recent sort of chat on the right. You can have classes in here that walk through things like how to log in and place an order. You can also take grow workspace content like I've done here and put all of these amazing bundles inside of these lessons. So people can scroll through, they can download things. They can leave testimonials, ask questions. And then you can have a chat room as well, which kind of serves the purpose of, you know, if you would be discussing things, you know, and inside of a Facebook group. Lots of, lots of great options in here to communicate and stay in touch. And we have a whole course on setting this up and it teaches you actually how to create these vaults. And that is, uh, it's good oiling.com forward slash move your groups. And it's the, the full planner and how to set it up and everything.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming out. Oh, you had another question?
Um, yeah, it, it might be another longer one, um, more intense. Um, you guys have funnel trainings, correct? Okay. Cause I think I'm still sort of confused on what, what you would offer in a funnel and how to get it to work.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, what I'm attempting to go to right now, my computer's being very slow for some reason. Here we go. Get oiling.com forward slash get leads. This is a little mini course and it actually has a full funnel that's pre-made that you can plug into your system and it teaches you how to, how to modify it to make it your own. So I go over the whole thing in there. And then if you want to check it out, we have a sister platform called Attract Well, uh, that's built for coaches. So not young living people. You don't need to have a track well, because get oiling is the same thing. You just, you know, get our training over there. Cause you can do everything with your one get oiling account. But, um, but last week on the Attract Well office hours, we did go into the mechanics of a funnel, which is a bit more complicated than what I teach here. Uh, and then, uh, and then today we're talking about lead generation. And this is at two o'clock Eastern. So in an hour from now. Uh, and you can, you can sign up for that if you ever want to at attractwell.com forward slash office hours. And we do live, you know, work sessions like this. And anyone here who is, you know, joining those calls is welcome to join, join us on those and participate in sort of live work reviews like this as well.
Okay.
Awesome. Good questions. And thank you. I love the progress that you're making and feel free to, you know, come on for another review like this. Next time you've implemented some things, come back, get some feedback. We're, we're here to help.
Oh, um, thank you. I was going to say, I remember my other question.
Oh, sure.
It's been bugging me and I don't know if it's a quick fix or if we can fix it at all. Um, when I am editing my website and blog posts and stuff, and then I go into my get oiling dashboard and it shows like 50 views because I, I'm the one who's viewing my own website and changing it. Is there a way to toggle off that feature where it shows everyone else besides me that views my pages?
There isn't right now, largely because in most cases it's a different domain. In this case, yeah, it's a different domain name. So it doesn't know that you're logged into the ghetto like back office. So there's really no way to like connect the two. So it has to unfortunately record your own visits.
Gotcha.
All right. So while we're still here, one more thing I want to show you guys, uh, since we're logged in. And this is what you couldn't see before, uh, because it was very small on the slides. If you go to customize my site, if you want those great built-in themes, uh, that come with your site that are your, your homepage, when you sign up for get oiling, that's going to be right over here under customized built-in theme. There is like the pre-existing thing that, that's here when you share this on social, for instance, I think as a woman smelling lavender or something. Like you could change this to something of your own. And then this sharing description then becomes the meta description for that page. So if you're using a good oiling custom, um, built-in theme, rather, if you're using a built-in theme for your homepage on get oiling, you can still get found on search. Uh, you know, if you're using the right titles and things like that. But your description is, is what's going to cause people to click. So everybody's got the same one out of the gate. If you want to differentiate yours, uh, you can swap that out here. Just, I showed you how to do the meta description on the blog post. Let's just real quick, just in case you guys didn't see, we'll go over to one of, one of the pages here that she has and under your settings, it's the search engine description right here. Just make sure you're putting something there for people to click. Make sure that you are, uh, you know, knowing the, the keywords to be including first. And again, there's no exact science to this, just work on it. And then update those as you saw here today. Sydney, thank you for coming out and, and working with us today.
Thank you so much.
Be happy to have you back again sometime soon. So, um, yeah, that was a lot and a lot of good questions. And I, I really promised I wasn't going to blow anybody's brains open here today. I don't know if, if, you know, if everybody's head's still intact. This is a big topic. But did we have any other questions before we go? I think Sarah, your hand is raised. Did you, did you have a question or did you want to chat before we leave? Okay. No, your hand is down. So maybe no. Okay. Cool, cool. Uh, Q and A. Okay. Where do you add the metadata to the built-in theme? So that's under customize my site. And then you customize the built-in theme. Uh, and Ilka, uh, no, it is not a part of get oiling. It is attract well. Uh, however, you're certainly welcome to join. And that's every Thursday at two o'clock. All right, you guys, great questions today. We're always grateful to have you here. Uh, we will be, uh, sharing this information, this video, and I'll go ahead and just like put these slides into a PDF and put those in the description, YouTube. So you guys can use it for reference as you are putting this stuff to use in your business. Just don't stress out, don't overthink it. Uh, it's, it really should be a logical exercise to say, what is this person thinking and what are they typing? Uh, and then how can I include what they're typing in what I'm writing? And that's really it. If we can connect those things and just do more things that connect, creating content, then we're good. Right? Um, all right. So we look forward to seeing you next week and y'all have a great week.